If I hear heavy footsteps on a floor above me making the floorboards creak, I will always have a flinch response if another grown man starts yelling or throwing things around just because of my childhood and I'm not going to follow those programmed in instincts and I'm not going to start acting like Stuart is anything other than a sad thuggish follower.
You told us there were thousands of people like you, young people who've been brought up in these families. Have you talked to any of them?
Yes, I have been able to network with many wonderful people who grew up in the militia movement and in survivalist groups. My heart goes out to the families of all of the other January 6th insurrectionists who took the opportunity to file restraining orders against them, only to now have them loose on the streets. The good thing about having a government that caters to people like Stuart is that they're also signing on for the enormous incompetence and pettiness that comes with people like Stuart. That is the thing to keep in mind is that fascists are on the whole generally pretty stupid.
Dakota, I'm hearing you and I think of the bravery. What would you say to people now listening saying, what can I do?
Fundamentally, don't let yourselves be splintered. Don't let yourselves become brow beaten into remaining silent. Really develop connections in your community for if there is a natural disaster and FEMA has been dismantled. If there is an outbreak of a disease, you've got to focus on what you can do realistically in your own community instead of being caught up in things outside of your control on the national level.
How old are you?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah. It strikes me, it's kind of odd. Stuart used to talk this way and he was a wild conspiracy theorist.
He is very much signed on to an exact mirror image of what I was raised to be afraid of. The right wing in America has made themselves into the new world order that they've been claiming to be against all these years.
Yeah. Dakota, one last thing. I asked you when we spoke in August, we heard a little bit of it to begin the segment. You know, this was your dad. We have pictures of him as a kid. Isn't there just an ember of that? And you said at that time that you had grieved that a long time ago. I'm assuming that's still true.
Yeah. Stuart is a petty, small-minded authoritarian and anything that I tried to will into life for a real father-son relationship as a child was never there. Stuart has always been empty on the inside and always prepared to make that somebody else's problem. There's no feeling. There's just the knowledge that you're about to walk through tall grass with a rattlesnake in it and precautions need to be taken. That is the sum of it. I have no father and I haven't for a long time.
Dakota Adams, the man who raised him is Stuart Rhodes, founder of the oath keepers, pardoned by President Trump for his role, one of the architects of January 6th. Dakota, thank you so much and please stay safe.
Thank you very much.
And we learned today that a new documentary about Stuart Rhodes featuring Dakota and his mother, Tasha Adams, will debut on MSNBC on February 2nd. It's Here and Now.
Hey, this is Steve Inskeep. One of the things you can count on from NPR and this station, we've got your back when it comes to reporting the news, bringing you facts you can count on. And one thing this station counts on is contributions to keep it going. You can help by donating a vehicle you no longer need, which is free to you, easy to do, and could mean hundreds of dollars worth of support. Thanks.
To donate your vehicle, go to radioiq.org. And thanks.
President Trump has mass pardoned January 6th rioters, many of whom violently attacked police officers.
Those people, and I'm not saying in every single case, but there was a lot of patriotism with those people.
But they were all convicted in US courts with due process. With the pardons is the rule of law over in America. That's on the next On Point.
You can hear On Point weekday evenings at seven on Radio IQ.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And BetterHelp, committed to making mental well-being a priority and offering support in taking on everything life demands with therapists available to communicate via video, chat, or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
It's Here and Now. Next time you see your kid scribbling on the wall, take a deep breath and take comfort in the fact that children have been doing that for thousands of years. Dozens of charcoal drawings are on the walls of the Las Monedas Cave in northern Spain. Most of the images of animals are drawn by a steady hand, but some pictures don't quite look like the others. And a study published late last year says those drawings were made by children. Isabel Wischer is an archaeologist at Arhus University who led that research. She joins us now from Denmark. Izzy, welcome. And tell us, you've been inside this cave that people were using 14,000 years ago. What's it like in there?
Yeah, so the Las Monedas Cave is, actually, it's a very big cave and it's completely pitch black when you go in. It's very dark. But the area where there's some examples of Ice Age drawings is in a much smaller part of the cave. So you kind of go through this very small gallery and it's about 40 square meters total where they produce these really unusual drawings that drew the attention of our study.
So you say they're unusual. Why? What were these Ice Age kids drawing?
Yeah, so what we typically have from the Ice Age is usually drawings of animals. So your horse, python. But what's unusual about this panel is it's really not that at all. So it was initially interpreted as enigmatic signs, just because it looks so weird and unusual compared to what we're used to. It seems like really, they weren't trying to draw much at all, these children. They seem to just be making some random marks on the wall and doing that thing.
These kids were scribbling.
Exactly. They were, yeah.
But how do we know they were made by children? What other signs did you see?
This study was very interdisciplinary. So we collaborated with John Matthews, who is an expert in children's drawings. So he's a developmental psychologist and for decades he's studied how children draw in modern societies, particularly very young children. And these young children's drawings tend to be linked to their kind of motor skills. So as they're developing and learning how to control their bodies, they go through set phases of the kinds of drawings and marks that they produce. And this panel from Las Monedas exactly kind of has all of the features that we'd expect to see of children's drawings. So we have loose sort of marks that kind of go backwards and forwards as they're just kind of moving their entire arm across the surface of the cable. We have sort of circular marks that they're repeatedly drawing over and then some more kind of controlled marks, like wobbly marks that they're trying to control their motor movements and make a more precise kind of mark with their hands. So these were really key indicators that showed us that these were children who made this art.
And your study suggests these kids were working alone. Why is that important?
Yeah, so it's really important, I think, for us to appreciate that children were doing their own thing back in this period. So we previously have evidence of children making art alongside mom and dad, but this is really the first time we've demonstrated that children were also kind of making art by themselves. And that really gives us an insight into what these societies were like. It was important for these societies that children were able to kind of play and engage with materials and not necessarily that it was a harsh environment where children were restricted in what they were able to do.
14,000 years ago, it's shocking to think about it. The planet was in an Ice Age. What was life like back then for these folks who were making these drawings?
This is actually a period where we see a lot of sort of cultural expression by these people that lived in this environment. So we see them kind of producing really remarkable artworks in caves, but also outside of caves too, decorating their body, adorning their body and really expressing their own identities. And this is a period where, while it was cold, the climate's sort of gradually warming up, going into sort of the climate that we have now. So they're sort of beginning to spread across Europe and build longer sort of social connections and exploring new lands and that sort of thing. Really, this is a very modern population of humans that are expressing themselves and the kinds of tools and the sort of art expression that they're producing too.
I don't know if this resonates with you, Izzy, but there's something about this story, realizing that children from the Ice Age, at least in some fundamental way, were doing the same thing as our children today. I had an emotional reaction to that in one way. And forgive the unscientific question, but did you feel anything like that when you stood before those drawings?
Yeah, absolutely. And what always strikes me is how full of life these drawings are that were made by the children. You can kind of picture them picking up a bit of charcoal and making the marks on the wall, right? And having a very playful experience. It's a very emotional thing that connects us to the past and allows us to appreciate how human these societies were.
Isabel Wischer is an archaeologist at Arhus University. She's in Denmark. Thank you so much, Izzy. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for having me.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix, feeling a little better about the marks on my walls.
Oh, your children are geniuses. I'm Robin Young in Boston. It's Here and Now.
Pastor Johnny Crane, invite him to come forward to the podium. Pastor Crane, I invite you to tell us a little bit about your church and then lead us in a prayer. When Pastor Crane is ready to lead us in prayer, invite everybody to stand up, whoso desire. Remain standing, enjoying the board and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Crane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Johnny Crane, pastor of Villa Heights Baptist Church in Roanoke, actually in the Bon Sac area. And we just celebrated 101 years serving and ministering here in Roanoke County and thankful for the opportunity. My family and I are new to Roanoke County, just moved here in June of 2024 and just been excited about partnering with the community. And if you could, I'd like to say a prayer at this time.
Okay.
Father, we come before you today. We want to thank you for this opportunity and we want to thank you for this county and all the work that's going to be done and represented even before coming into this room today. And I pray that your name would be glorified in all that's done. And I pray, thank you for your glory and your power that you demonstrate to us. Thank you for the grace that you've bestowed upon all of us in giving us life. And then also thank you for the salvation that you've made available to all men. I pray that you'll grant wisdom in this meeting today. You told us in Proverbs, Chapter 3, verse 5, you said, "If all of our ways we acknowledge you, you shall make straight our paths." And I pray that in the meeting this morning and this afternoon, you would make straight the paths that need to be made. And we'll thank you for all that you do. I pray that as a result of this meeting, that there would be peace and that it'd also be a peaceful meeting as well. We'll thank you for what you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for January the 28th, 2025. The board is now returning to open session. The Board of Supervisors held a closed session earlier today at 12:00 PM prior to the regular scheduled board meeting. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 6:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 PM and Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can be also viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require special attendance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Gentle reminder to please turn off all your cell phones or either place them on silent. We go to item C, Opening Ceremonies, Item 1, Roll Call. Will the clerk again call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Item D, Certification Resolution. In the closed session just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matters which were identified in the motion to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Is there a motion to adopt the certification resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Item E, Request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add, or change the order of the agenda, fellow board members?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Owens?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Lubek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been proposed that we add as a new business item G2, a resolution in support of Renovation Alliance's funding application to the United States Department of Agriculture for a housing preservation grant.
Yeah, we need housing. Are there any objections from our fellow board members?
No.
No objection.
Okay, seeing none, the agenda is so amended. We move to item F, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Number one, Resolution of Appreciation to Phil C. North for his service as chairman of the Board of Supervisors in 2024. And I ask Mr. North if he'll join me at the podium. Thank you. Clerk, can you please read the resolution?
Resolution of Appreciation to Phil C. North for his service as chairman of the Board of Supervisors in 2024. Whereas Phil C. North served as chairman of the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors during 2024. And whereas the Board of Supervisors recognizes during Mr. North's term as chairman, the county achieved numerous accomplishments contributing to economic growth, including 57 million in new project announcements and investments within Roanoke County and the creation of more than 200 new jobs. An announcement by Mack Trucks to invest 14.5 million in a 70,000-square-foot expansion to its facility in the Glenver area. Completion of Southern Team Auto Mall's new state-of-the-art Hyundai dealership in the Hollins area. Approval of the Roanoke County's first four megawatt solar energy facility on Vent Mountain. The redevelopment of 47,000 square feet within Tanglewood Mall into a modern YMCA facility. Whereas Mr. North is committed to advancing and enriching the quality of life in Roanoke County through a variety of achievements, including tax reductions for citizens and businesses, identifying the need for diverse and affordable housing options across the county, completion of Fire and Rescue Station 12 in Bon Sac, which enhances response times in the area, safeguarding lives and property, serving as a regional advocate for funding and expansion of the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport, completion of a demographic study to assess the future needs of our community. Whereas during Mr. North's term, Roanoke County's public schools received continued support of advancing students' education, safety, including the groundbreakings of a new career and technology center and renovations to W.E. Conde and Glen Cove Elementary Schools, all totaling a record 130 million in project funding by the Board of Supervisors, petitioning the General Assembly for increased support for local school construction and Children's Services Act funding, the deployment of more school resource officers within Roanoke County public schools. Whereas Mr. North has remained a stalwart champion of the transportation projects that improve citizens' lives and enhance road safety, including securing more than 12.5 million in state and federal funding to advance key transportation projects across Roanoke County, completion of the Buck Mountain Road Roundabout and Sidewalk along Williamson Road, making significant progress toward developing the Roanoke River Greenway in eastern Roanoke County and the Glade Creek Greenway through Vineyard Park, expanding the McAfee Nob Trailhead Shuttle to include shuttle stops within Roanoke County, the City of Salem, and the Dragon's Tooth Trailhead. Whereas Mr. North serves as chairman of the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, the Transportation Policy Steering Committee for the National Association of Counties, and the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, and continuously advocates for improvements to Route 460, Route 419 Electric Road, Route 220, and Interstate 81. And whereas Mr. North serves as second vice president of the Virginia Association of Counties, advocating on behalf of Virginia counties. And whereas Mr. North received the 2024 Gordon N. Dixon Award from the Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions for his work to facilitate regional transportation improvements across the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, urban and rural member areas. Whereas Mr. North emphasized sound financial strategies and practices and promoted regional projects and initiatives to benefit all the residents of the Roanoke Valley. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, does hereby extend its deepest appreciation to Phil C. North for his collaborative and steady leadership of the Board of Supervisors as chairman during 2024 and for his belief in democracy and championing of citizen participation in local government.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right. Clerk calls the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North? Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Mahoney?
He could have skipped me.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes, of course. Take a moment and let board members make some comments and then we'll let Mr. North just have a couple minutes to wrap it up.
Oh, it won't take but a couple.
I'll just make a quick comment in that, Mr. North, you have been valuable to Roanoke County. You're a retired man, but you have been tireless for Roanoke County. We appreciate your advocacy. We appreciate all that you've done on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Gee whiz, Phil, I wish you'd do something when you do. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Phil, I think it's, as the clerk has read the resolution, 2024 was a very good year and that good year was under your leadership as chairman. I want to emphasize that leadership is not just here, Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, but also on a regional basis with everything you've done on transportation and a statewide basis for everything you've done with your leadership with the Virginia Association of Counties. We're very fortunate to have you on the board and it was a good year. And it was enjoyable reading the resolution this weekend and hearing it again. Sort of reminds us that sometimes we sort of get lost in the negative aspects of the job. And so sometimes it's good to hear that we accomplished, under your leadership, a lot of good things for the citizens of Roanoke County. Thank you.
Thank you. And Phil, when you told the people at VACO that you have all the time in the world, I mean, look at all the stuff. You mean when I did this? Yeah, 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 exactly. So I didn't think you were going to win, but you did. You said that once. Anyway, so glad that you're passing it on to me, but just like the other two said, your network and your effectiveness for the county has really grown in the last four or five years, especially in transportation. And you're a good mentor to all of us. And so we really appreciate that and glad that we could offer this resolution to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Don't worry, we got your back.
Yeah.
Okay, so guess what? You pulled out some notes, did you?
Start the timer for three minutes.
Yeah. We've done a lot in Roanoke County the last three years. And I say that to say this, and I've shared some of this with you, so I won't read it all, but in economic development, we've had some great successes with our economic development team, what we call proactive economic development. We heard some good stories earlier today in our closed session. We opened something for public safety's benefit, the new fire station in Bon Sac, which took about three years, but that's really going to benefit the whole region, not only the citizens in that area, but in Vinton and the city as well. We've increased school funding, as mentioned. We've done a lot in transportation the last three years, about $65 million worth in other people's money. Tax savings, this is one I like to say, we have been able to pass on to the citizens, five cents on the real estate tax, among other savings as well. And that's been huge because that hadn't been touched in probably about 15 years. And in a time of increased assessments, I know that was welcome. We still have a AA+ bond rating. I don't know if we'll ever get to AAA, but we always set our goals high and lofty. And a strong unified Board of Supervisors, all four of us and Tammy too, they can accomplish much working together as a team. And I think this board exemplifies that. And I think that around the state, people look at us and they're envious in some ways of how we can work so closely together to get things done. So the promises we made have been promises kept for a brighter future in Roanoke County. And I want to thank each one of you all for your support as well as for staffs. It takes a team to make things happen. We all work for our citizens and all of us advocate for them in one way or another throughout the days of the year. And I look forward to even stronger results in the future. And we are Roanoke County Strong. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah, we gotta get a picture up there.
Do you want us to stand right behind you?
Yeah, you can do that.
Why don't you all come down here and get in front of me? Want to do that? Let's do that. So sigh of relief when you don't have to handle that gavel every beating.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to item two, Resolution congratulating the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team for winning the 2024 Virginia High School League, VHSL, Class III State Championship. Ladies, welcome all up here like you did last year. We're going to read a resolution for you. Come on up. Coaches, y'all can line up right back here. Where are the captains? Yeah, the captain's kind of right here and we're going to let him. That's the resolution. Clerk, can you please read the resolution?
Resolution congratulating the- Resolution congratulating the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team for winning the 2024 Virginia High School League VHSL Class Three State Championship. Whereas athletic competitions are an important and integral part of the team curriculum at schools in Roanoke County, teaching cooperation, sportsmanship, teamwork, and athletic skill. And whereas on November twenty-third, 2024, the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team won the Class Three Championship at the Salem Civic Center, the Titans outscored Grafton in three sets, twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-one, and twenty-five, nineteen. Whereas the team's exceptional skills, versatility, and athletic talent were on full display, culminating the Hidden Valley, accumulating in Hidden Valley securing back-to-back state championship titles. And whereas Hidden Valley was also named River Ridge District Champions and ranked number four in the state of Virginia. And whereas Hidden Valley has ended its season with a record of twenty-nine to, leaving a lasting impression with its student, athletes, opponents, fans, and volleyball community. And whereas the Titans showcase to great character, poise, sportsmanship, and sportsmanship while representing their school and community, they are a true asset to Roanoke County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to the members of the Hidden Valley High School Girls volleyball team. Seniors Callie Anderson, Sophie Arnold, Maddie Carter, Meredith Crowley, Chloe Mascaro, Kaylee Pahn. Juniors Abby Bishop, Kamlyn Morstad. Sophomores Kenley Brown, Lauren Dudley, Olivia Viar, and freshman Mia Jolly. The team was led by captains Callie Anderson, Sophie Arnold, Maddie Carter, Carly Pahn, and coached by Pierre Ellis, Allison Stor, Curtis Fuller, and Logan Pasley. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to the members of the team, the coaches, and the school and their future endeavors.
Thank you. Ford, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes. Coaches, do y'all have anything you want to add some comments to? Come on up.
No. Yes, maybe.
Yeah.
Just on behalf of Hidden Valley High School and, you know, southwest Roanoke County community, would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this recognition, for the great work that these girls did, not only winning the state championship this year, but last year as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to our head coach, Pierre Ellis.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Roanoke County, much appreciated for bringing us in today. You can say three things. They had the mental toughness, the moxie, and the fortitude. To have gone through a transition, to have gotten to the region semifinal, and to have fallen short, have to go on the road for two state games and come to the Salem Civic Center and wrap it up, shows that mental toughness and fortitude these young ladies had. And I want to congratulate them. I want to thank those seniors for their leadership. This is three years in a row that they've had the opportunity to play at the state level, and they have done one outstanding job. It was a pleasure to coach you, young ladies, and forever be proud of it. That's certainly a milestone, and back-to-back state championships. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Comments from the Board? Yeah.
I'll make a quick comment, as I know some of my peers want to say things too, but we just want to really congratulate you, because this is quite the honor, and it really is a great feat that you have accomplished, and we're, you may not really fully understand this, but you will someday, in that you are ambassadors for Roanoke County. And so when you are carrying the mantle of state champions, and the way that you played, your work ethic, your positive attitude, the moxie, whatever it is, you are, you are a direct reflection of Roanoke County, and we really appreciate you for that. So thank you for being here today, and thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, Mr. North. Ladies, I'm going to tell you something. One of you, one of you ladies one day is going to be sitting up here in one of these seats if you stay in Roanoke County, because you have just begun your trail and pathway of leadership. Every one of you is a leader, and you lead people, and sometimes you have to shift in your leadership, like the coach tells you during a game, sometimes you got to change up or do something different depending on the opposition. But this is just the beginning, and those, these things that you experienced today, you're going to take with you the rest of your life, and team sports is a great pathway for future leaders. So congratulations on what you did, but also on what you're about to do in the future as you move on in your education experience and in the job world. So, thank you for representing Roanoke County.
We want to recognize and congratulate you. I'm sure some of you may think it's kind of a waste of time to come here and listen to a bunch of old people talk to you. But it is important, because we know how much, how much work it is and how hard it is to do the athletic stuff, do the academic stuff. For the seniors, I'm sure you're going through the, the application process for colleges and how scary that can be at times, but I hope you will at least bear with us and let us congratulate you. Thank you.
And I'll close. Coach, congratulations. I know Hidden Valley has had different coaches the last three years, right? Okay, and so to come in and win a state championship, I don't know where you came from, what, what your coaching background is, but to bring everybody together and do it a second time with a different coach, I think that's a lot of credit to your, to yourself. So I want to ask the captains, step up, I got some questions for you. Step on up to the microphone. Y'all aren't getting away from it. So you had two losses. Who did you lose to?
Christiansburg.
Both times? What, what was the deal? I mean...
I'm going to let y'all take that one. Just a bad day. Yeah, bad day. Two bad days.
All right. So you played Grafton again. We did this, y'all played them last year, but you won all three this time. What was different than last year?
I think that we improved, and we're, we have a big senior group, and that just really helped us, because we've been connecting over all the years.
Good, good. Anybody heading off to college and play volleyball? You are, okay. Is that it?
Meredith.
Meredith, okay, great, fantastic. Well, like Mr. North said, this helps build your leadership onto the next stage, and, you know, we're, we are very proud. Like Ms. Hooker said, we're really proud of Hidden Valley and the state championship. As I told some of you last year that were here, my kids went through Hidden Valley, and they, they touched the state championship game, and it was a thrill. So, welcome to Pete. Are you going to try for three next year?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Well, good luck, and thank you. Want to get a picture? Yeah, everybody come on up here, we'll take a picture.
Give you one.
We're going to need to stand up here, ladies.
No. I'm sorry. The next two also. I don't know. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We now move to item G, new business. Resolution expressing support for legislation authorizing the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia to acquire parcels in Roanoke County, Virginia, and Bedford County, Virginia known as Explorer Park. Doug Blunt, our Assistant County Administrator, welcome. Mr. Blunt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Before you, for consideration today is a joint resolution between Roanoke City and Roanoke County for the support of eleven-hundred acres of parkland at Explorer Park to convey, to be conveyed to Roanoke County by the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority, or otherwise known as the VRFA. Roanoke County signed a ninety-nine-year lease with the Virginia Recreation Facilities Authority in 2013. At that time, the park was largely closed to the public, other than the mountain bike trails, the Blue Ridge Parkway Visitor Center, and Ruethroff Point. In 2013, the park only saw approximately thirty thousand visitors a year. Over the last eleven years, Roanoke County has revived Explorer Park into a great regional park for our citizens, but also a tourist destination for the southeastern part of the United States. The Board of Supervisors believed in the vision for Explorer Park that created a master plan for development for over the next thirty years. The Board of Supervisors has invested more than eight million dollars in capital funding for infrastructure, and over seven million dollars in operating funds in the last eleven years. As the master plan has been implemented, the park has added many new trails, a mountain bike center, treetop quest, primitive camping, and many new signature events such as aluminum nights, Go Fest Outpost, Tavern Stage Concert Series, and new for 2025 and 2026, USA Cycling's Mountain Bike Championships. Roanoke County also has public-private partnerships with Don's Cabins and Twin Creek's Brew Pub. Because of these many initiatives, Explorer Park now attracts more than three hundred thousand visitors annually. To fully implement the master plan of the park, Roanoke County needs to own the land. The current arrangement hinders the recruitment of a lodge, RV campground, restaurants, et cetera. Roanoke County seeks to acquire the eleven-hundred acres in both Bedford and Roanoke Counties. Last month, the Bedford County Board of Supervisors and Roanoke County Board of Supervisors both approved resolutions supporting the conveyance of the land in both localities to Roanoke County. Senator Chris Head has filed Senate Bill seven ninety-six, and Delegate Will Davis has filed House Bill twenty-three twenty-one to allow the Virginia Recreational, Recreational Facilities Authority to convey the land to Roanoke County, once they have determined their mission has been fulfilled for Explorer Park, and may dissolve if they so desire. Since then, Roanoke County and Roanoke County have had discussions about the conveyance of the land to Roanoke County and the status of the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority. Roanoke City supports the land being conveyed to Roanoke County, but wishes for the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority not to be dissolved, but to remain functional so that it can focus on new projects. The resolution for your consideration today states that Roanoke County and Roanoke City agree that if enabling legislation is adopted by the General Assembly, neither Roanoke County nor Roanoke City will urge the dissolution of the VRFA upon the conveyance of the Explorer Park parcels to Roanoke County, and that both localities will work together with the General Assembly on modifications to the VRFA-enabling legislation to facilitate the ability of the VRFA to participate in future projects. The future of the VRFA does not have any impact on Explorer Park once the land is conveyed to Roanoke County. Roanoke City passed this resolution last Tuesday, January twenty-first. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution, and I would like to thank Senator Chris Head and Delegate Will Davis for their support, as well as Matt Wells, Director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Commonwealth of Virginia. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for pass key one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
If I could just add a real quick comment with, you know, the expansion and the popularity of the Explorer Park, it's very exciting that we're finally getting this property over to Roanoke County, and I really look forward to what happens in the future. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment for Mr. Chairman. This is a good example of regionalism at its best by getting to support a bid for county, but also the city of Roanoke, because this transfer of land, if approved by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, will facilitate economic development and recreation opportunities here in this region that will benefit not only Roanoke County, but all the surrounding counties as well. So it's a win-win all the way around, and great job, and I hope that the General Assembly sees this way clear to support the legislation. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. North. Okay. Yeah, the only thing I would add is, you know, we've been working on this quietly, I would guess, for two or three years, and Mr. North, thank you for spearheading it. You seem to have taken the lead on helping us push this through, helping the network. Mr. Blunt, same with you, and, and all your efforts, and let's, let's hope the General Assembly will come through this time. So, Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes. Item two, resolution in support of Renovation Alliance's funding application to the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Office for Housing Preservation Grant. Peter Lubek, County Attorney, welcome, Mr. Lubek.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The Board of Supervisors recently received a request from Renovation Alliance asking the Board to provide a letter of support to the United States Department of Agriculture, or USDA, encouraging the USDA to approve Renovation Alliance's application for housing, for a housing preservation grant. Renovation Alliance is a local nonprofit that has been rebuilding homes of low-income homeowners in our area since nineteen ninety-nine. To date, they have repaired more than one thousand seven hundred homes in the Roanoke Valley area, all at no cost to the homeowner. To accomplish this work, they engage volunteers and partners, and seek funding from public and private sources. Renovation Alliance's goals include, one, ensuring that our neighbors in need are able to reside in warm, safe, dry, and healthy homes; two, preserving affordable housing; and three, contributing to community revitalization. Renovation Alliance has successfully applied to, for USDA housing preservation grants funding since 2014. In all these years, Reservate, Renovation Alliance has invested more than one million and forty-eight thousand dollars in USDA housing preservation grant funds and home repair services to benefit homeowners in need of the counties of Bonnet Tod, Craig, Floyd, Franklin, and Roanoke. However, in 2024, Renovation Alliance's pre-application for housing preservation grant funding was denied for failure to secure letters of support from all five localities within its proposed service area. It was therefore proposed by members of this Board that this matter be brought before the Board expeditiously. We have walked it on to today's agenda, and that the resolution authorizing the county administrator to provide the requested letter be approved without delay. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
I would like to just say a real quick word. I got a call, I don't know, it may have even been last year originally, when they were trying to go in and amend their denial, or submit a proposal again, and they still had their, a new proposal denied because we weren't very timely. I think there was a lack of communication or some insignificant issue, but this group has just been phenomenal. Gary has told me about some of the people who have participated, very prominent people in our, in our valley, and they're volunteering their time, effort, many time their own dollars, along with other organizations, private and public, but it's just a great work. And when they came to us and said they just needed a resolution to be able to do this in Roanoke County, I was like, how quickly can we say yes? So I appreciate support from this Board in moving this along quickly, and thank you, Peter, for your work.
Of course.
And thank you, Martha, for bringing it to our attention. Gary?
Mm-hmm. Doing good things.
Gary Darrell, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'm seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes. We move to H, first reading of ordinances. Number one, ordinance accepting and appropriating a donation from the Friends of the Roanoke County Public Library in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for use by the Roanoke County Library Department. Jim Blanton, Director of Library Services, welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here. The Friends of the Library are an essential partner providing funding to support a variety of library programs and initiatives. A few examples of some of the things that the Friends have supported over the years... A few examples of some of the things that the Friends have supported over the years and still support: 3D printing services at the library, and artificial intelligence programming, most famously with Pepper, the humanoid robot; the popular annual Mystery Night program at South County Library; birding backpacks for checkout, including guides and tools for local birding; and library advocacy efforts through the Virginia Library Association, which results in additional state aid funding for the library and for libraries across the state. In addition to these examples, perhaps the most important effort of all is their support in the library's annual summer reading program. This essential program encourages children and teens to read during the summer months, fostering a love of reading and making sure they continue to develop their skills while they're out of school. Last year, program participants read almost 44,000 books over the summer. To encourage participation, we offer a variety of activities, ranging from reading goal challenges to providing educational and interactive family programming at all library locations. This summer, our theme is Color Our World with a Focus on Art, and staff are busy planning a full roster of fun and engaging activities. Last year, staff introduced a gaming component in which participants earn special badges for completing activities and participating in programs. It was extremely popular, and patrons traveled throughout the system to collect badges, including the prized Voyager badge, which required patrons to go to all locations and track down the bookmobile. So, I met someone at the end of some wrap-up party at Benton Mount who was particularly excited to get that badge. So, we're looking forward to keeping that going. And this year, they're actually going to be holding a badge design competition, and the winners will be announced in September for Library Card Sign-Up Month. The focus of summer reading, as always, is inspiring and reading, is inspiring reading and exploration throughout the summer, but also throughout the whole year. The Friends make all of this possible by providing the funding support for materials, supplies, performers, and more. They generate this funding primarily through the many hours of dedicated work in coordinating annual book sales and ongoing sale areas of the branches. To give a sense of how much effort goes into the sales, for the most recent fall sale, volunteers spent 385 hours sorting donations, which come in on a continuous basis. They spent 113 hours setting up for the sale and 195 hours operating the sale, for a total of 693 hours to make that sale happen. And that's for every big sale that they do. The spring sale is coming up on April 26th, runs through May 1st, and they're already busy sorting donations. In addition to the sale, the Friends also have partnered on fundraising opportunities with local businesses such as Kroger's Community Rewards Program, Krispy Kreme Donuts, and an annual book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble, and they're always seeking out new ways to support the library. All of these activities are a significant undertaking, and we deeply appreciate their dedicated effort in providing the support for over 30 years. We thank you for your consideration of this appropriation request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you will have.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading for February 11th, 2025?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the ordinance at item H1.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item I, Appointments. Do any Board members have an appointment that has not been given to the Clerk and included in the Board report for Agenda Item I? We move on to, is there a motion to approve the list of appointments?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to item J, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered by the Board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form of forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Does a Board member have any wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? If there is none, a motion to adopt all matters?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Move to item K on the Agenda. Citizens' Comments and Communications, this time has been set aside for Roanoke County citizens, county property owners, county business owners to address the Board on matters of interest, of concern. While the Board desires to hear from all who desire to speak, this Agenda item is limited to a duration of 30 minutes. Each individual speaker shall be afforded three minutes to speak. I have some forms here for speakers, so we appreciate anybody who comes forward to address the Board. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address prior to sharing any comments. As previously noted, each person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. At the front of the podium is a light system that tells you how much time you have remaining when the light changes from green to yellow. Please share any concluding marks, remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, your time is ended. While the Board desires to hear from all who desire to speak, we ask that speakers refrain from repeating comments already made by others. The first citizen I have is a Donald Johnson. Please come forward.
I wouldn't. I needed to hear. I come here today to talk about the increases in real estate taxes. It's due to assessment, and it's nice that we don't have a rate increase. But I was talking to somebody about when I get to be 70, I'll go down and see if I can get it stopped, you know? Right now, I'm 85, and I can't do it because the ceiling is $70,000, and it's been $70,000 like 40, 50, I don't know how many years. It's a long time. And inflation has got so, my taxes have gone three times. The ceiling, that $70,000 for somebody 70 years old, and needs to be raised to at least $100,000 due to inflation over 40 years. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker I have is a Brian Jenkins. If you can state your name and your address, that would be appreciated.
Yes, sir. I am Brian Jenkins. I live at 5762 Sierra Drive in Roanoke County. First, I'd like to thank you on your position as Chairman and for Mr. North as Chairman last year and for the job he does in Hollins District. I'm here, of course, in reference to the increase in the real estate assessment also, understanding that, you know, when houses sell for more, that prices go up on everybody. That is something we can't incur. The problem I have, I guess, is, you know, my house is around $226,000. A house sells for $295,000, $3,000 down the street, those folks will incur that additional tax. When they tell me that my land goes up $10,000, and I'm sitting on a post-staff piece of property, I got to wonder, where's that $10,000 first? The second thing is, is I have spoke to many of my residents in the Boxley Hills area. Once the letters came out, a lot of talk got going, and I actually started talking to neighbors close by and other blocks down that I know. We also looked at it, compared, and it was a semblance of that with the property as far as the land going up to $10,000. We know that the buildings, of course, will go up based on the sales of the other. We have, you know, like gentlemen said, of course, a lot of us are retired in Roanoke County. We love to live in Roanoke County. It is a great place to live. I've raised my children. My grandchildren are here, and they go to county schools and the rec balls. I want to see their future, that they're able to supply, to work for their families and have a nice home. I've got two daughters. They both have, they're both married, they both have children, and they're doing their very best. Of course, all of us know we've suffered the last four years as far as inflation and everything that goes up. Everything in our life goes up. So, just looking at if it's possible that the Board take in consideration that we do have a lot of retirees out here that are living on fixed incomes, we're living on Social Security and retirement. Social Security goes up, gives us a cost of living, and what do they do? They take it back in Part B. So, yeah, all of you know. Yes, sir. So, I'm just asking that when y'all start looking at the assessments this year and the next couple of months before you make your decision, that you look at the tax rate, and if there's some way y'all can help us out here, we would truly appreciate it. I thank you for your time and your appreciation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker I have is Sheri Eckert. Can you repeat your name and your address, please?
Sheri Eckert, 3801 Belme Drive, Roanoke, Virginia. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here also about the real estate tax rate. I came actually last year, too. I'm another senior citizen on a fixed income. So, what I did, I understand that Virginia requires real estate to be assessed at market value. So, there's no changing the assessment, but the tax rate could be changed. And I'd like to actually give this to you before I finish. I found a listing of all the counties in Virginia and their tax rates, and Roanoke County has the second highest tax rate. The only place in the state that has a higher one is Fairfax. And so, I just question that. Why are we at the very top on the tax rate? And it seems that something could be done to help the citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We move to item L, Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file reports that have been included in the Agenda item labeled L? Mr. Chair?
Oh.
Motion.
Motion, okay. Second by Mr. Mahoney. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to item M, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. Mr. North?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few words here again. Busy week last week. Last Wednesday, staff and Ms. Hooker and I went to visit all seven legislators here in the Roanoke Valley area. We split up in teams so we could accomplish much in a short period of time, and our team advocated for the CTE equipment budget amendments that are carried by Delegate McNamara as well as Senator Head. We also advocated for Explorer Park as well, as various other budget amendments being carried throughout the region by our delegation. Last Thursday, I attended, along with Ms. Hooker, the Virginia County's Executive Board Meeting. One note about unfunded mandates was mentioned. There's an effort today, and as a matter of fact, there's an editorial in the Roanoke paper, headed the Richmond paper, about the state's support cap impact on K-12 instructional personnel in the county. It costs, it cost Roanoke County 8.1 million out of the 222 million that is impacted around the state of Virginia, and there's more on that Ms. Hooker, I'm sure, will talk about. But one thing I wanted to make mention of, if you take that 8.1 million that we're paying, that the state's not paying, and that other counties are paying, here in Roanoke County, that equates to $175 per parcel. Now, if we had that money back, or part of that money, or 25% of that money, you know, we might be able to pass it on as tax relief. Just saying that many times, counties are faced with unfunded mandates by the Commonwealth. So, the state's got 4.7 billion, I think 2.2 billion surplus monies because revenues have exceeded all expectations. So, I asked the question, can some of that be given back in the form of some relief on this and/or other things that we've asked for? It's also been said that based on my own assessment, as we talk about assessments, mine went up $300 a year, or $25 a month. That's 7%, driven by a menu of unfunded mandates that I just alluded to, high housing demand, and there's a low supply of housing fueled by inflation, multiple bids on houses sold. We talked on the phone today, Mr. Jenkins, and homes around Mr. Jenkins over there went up about almost $75, $100,000 more than his assessment. So, the market's out there, and it's getting a higher price than what the sales is, and it results in the market prices as we know them today. While my equity increased, I don't plan on moving anywhere anytime soon or selling my house, even though from time to time I get notices saying, I'd like to buy your house. I bet you would. If you're going to give me the money to move somewhere else, why I don't have to have a mortgage payment, so I might think about it, but not today. If we're not selling, that's invisible money that could fall in a devalued marketplace. If anything ever happened to our economy and our homes devalued, what you think you have equity is a dream. I know staff will turn over every rock, because I've been talking to staff, for our expenses to find more savings, to realize some tax burden relief in this year's budget. We all know that one cent on the real estate tax dollar costs Roanoke County $1.2 million. So, just to let you know, there's no free lunches. Lastly, I want to give kudos to my right supervisor, Hooker, whom was sworn in as Region 11 VACO Director, and whom also participated on the stage in a panel discussion that was second to none on schools and the challenges that I just alluded to. Superb job, Ms. Hooker, and you done good, as they say in the southwest part of Virginia. Sadly, I want to just share with you that Saturday night, we learned that William McCarty, the president-elect for VACO from the Isle of Light County, and a VACO friend, passed away suddenly and unexpectedly, and we want to keep him and his family in particular in our prayers. He also is the Chair of the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Authority, and he also happened to be a friend of my neighbor across the street, so I'm sorry to see him pass away. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Hooker?
Just a couple of brief comments. The first thing I wanted to chime in on the conversation about the real estate tax and how we get that. I, you know, Roanoke County is an awesome place to live, and we operate much like many cities in that we offer some of the same services as a city. The trash collection is second to none. As a matter of fact, I think Ms. King is here, that I've talked to her before, about how that there is no other county that picks up trash like Roanoke County does. And so, it's my understanding that's about five cents on the tax, and if the county wasn't picking up the trash, then I'm sure other arrangements would have to be made that would also cost money. But I think it's really a great service that Roanoke County offers. And then, when you start looking at fire and rescue and our law enforcement, I think that we have a system that's second to none in that we have a great percentage of career personnel. And I know when I first started working with the county some, that it was flipped. We had about 80% volunteers, maybe 20% career, and I think that's flipped now. Is that correct, Chief? And so, that's another expense. We have reliable safety, rescue, law enforcement here in Roanoke County. We have an excellent county. Our schools are second to none. We have very top-rated schools that I'm proud for our schoolchildren to be able to go to. So, that's all the positive things that are going on. We all understand the pain of the rising real estate tax. I feel confident that every member of our Board has also had an increase on our real estate, and so, we feel it, too. Most of us are retired also and understand that. So, we'll be looking to see what can be done. We're very early in the budget process, but we definitely understand the angst and the pain that that causes. I would like to say something real quickly, and then I know I've talked more than I normally do, but it was a really good VACO session, and I think one of the things that I was especially... And I think one of the things that I was especially pleased about is some of our discussions with our representatives over the schools. Back in the Great Recession in 2007, 2008 timeframe, the recession was so burdensome that they started cutting in areas. And one of the big cuts that they made was a support cap to schools. So you think of that, there's instructional aides. They're considered part of the support cap, as are custodians and principals. And the SOQs that the state has as a low bar requirement, I would dare say every school in the state of Virginia exceeds that because it's such a low bar. But for us to make up what is necessary to run our schools and what the state gives us costs Roanoke County $16.3 million annually. So we were strongly advocating for some relief from that support cap. And I'm hopeful that we'll get something. But that could really help us in, you know, potential for a tax rate reduction. But I just want it to be heard that we hear the hardship and that we're working hard to see what we can do about it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hooker. Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back on Saturday, January 18th, I had the honor and the pleasure of representing this board in Roanoke County at an event downtown celebrating Virginia 250. Virginia 250 is a celebration of the American Revolution that began 250 years ago. And it was just an excellent ceremony. Terry Austin, Delegate Terry Austin up in Bodatot. He's the honorary Chair of the 250 Commission. Honorary co-chair is Mamie Locke. This is a bipartisism approach to try to celebrate the beginnings of the American Revolution. We had just a truly fantastic, inspiring speaker, Carly Fiorina. She broke the glass ceiling for women in our country. She became the first head of a Fortune 50, Fortune 50 Corporation. And she gave an inspiring speech Saturday afternoon. We also had the VMI band, which was very nice. So it was a nice event. It was a great event. And it's interesting, you think of Lexington and Concord and those elements of American history. Well, one of the aspects of last Saturday, or Saturday 18th, they read the Finn Castle Resolution. We're not talking about the Finn Castle that's in Bodatot. It's Finn Castle further southwest Virginia. But that occurred 1775. And it was a precursor to Patrick Henry's "Give me liberty or give me death." And it's sort of an aspect of American revolutionary history that I was not aware of. And what this commission is attempting to do is to illustrate this aspect of American revolutionary history 250 years ago. They were able to get money, and they created a large van that they're gonna take around to all the public schools in the Commonwealth. And as you go through the van, it has interactive displays of that Revolutionary War history. It's very interesting, and if you ever have a chance to go through it, it's fascinating. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Couple of comments to finish up on, and then we're gonna move on to a work session. Couple of announcements. Roanoke County will be hosting a community meeting in regards to the East Roanoke River Greenway. The meeting will be February 5th at the Charles H. Hill Senior Center in Benton from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The purpose of the meeting is to review, discuss, and comment on potential conceptual Greenway routes to connect existing segments of the Roanoke River Greenway. There's also a second meeting, February 10th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Another meeting going on in regard to construction of the intersection of 419 and Route 220 on Monday, May 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the South County Library Auditorium. There'll be presentations from county staff and VDOT on that construction, that divergent diming that's gonna be starting up in early 2025. And I would also like just, I thank the citizens for coming forward and telling us about the real estate assessments. And I've told a couple of groups the last couple of weeks that we at the board hear that, and we're fighting inflation just like we are in our entire country. I'm on the front line of custom, single-family homes. I build those all around in the region. And three years ago, I was under $200 a square foot. Now I'm up to $240 to $245 a square foot. That pressure is like the automobile sales. When we had empty car lots of, you know, new cars to purchase, it put the pressure on the existing used cars, and the used cars went up like that. So we're seeing that same pressure on existing real estate, even if it's land. Land, we're not making any more land, so I'm not surprised land goes up. Mine did personally go up 7.5%, about $500. So I feel it, too. So I agree with Ms. Hooker. We're early in the budget cycle right now, and we all are gonna take a look at all that and determine what, you know, how we can help, what we can do. But we have, the last two years, maybe three years, we have lowered that tax rate to fight inflation. And we'll continue to do that if we need to. You okay?
Yes, I'm finished my comments.
Yeah, I just want to add something after looking at this list over, Ms. Eckert. Thank you for bringing this, if you're still here, I don't know if you are or not. But the rate on here was 23s rates, and we've gone down to $1.04, which is 2 cents more than what this sheet showed. But I want to tell you this little factoid. I bet you don't know how much our trash service, which is a great benefit, it only comes around once a week, cost us. It cost us equivalent of about 5 to 6 cents on your tax rate. So if you were to get rid of tax, I mean, waste pickup, which we don't recommend, you're gonna have trucks in your neighborhoods all five days of the week, and you're gonna have to pay for it, and you're gonna have to deal with the waste companies that are available in the marketplace. I had to do that once when I lived someplace else many, many years ago, and it won't cheap then, and it's not cheap now. So sometimes what we give you in terms of services are worth every penny that you pay for. And notwithstanding, we hear what you say today, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. North. We move to item N, work session. Number one, work session to review the Board of Supervisors' fiscal year 2024, 2025 mid-year revenues and expenditures. Laurie Gerhart and Steve Elliott will lead that session. The board will now recess to the third floor for the work session.